7:08, and I'd like to call the city council meeting to order, please. I know. Again, it is 7:09. Welcome to the July 19 Waukegan City Council Meeting. Roll call, please.
Alderman Mosio.
Here.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Here.
Alderman Newsome.
Present.
Alderman Turner.
Present.
Alderman Rivera.
Present.
Alderman Florian.
Present.
Alderman Hayes.
Present.
Alderman Bolton.
Present.
Alderman Seager.
Present.
Mayor Taylor.
Present.
You have a quorum, ma'am.
Thank you. I'd like to have the invocation by the Waukegan Fire Department Chaplain Gary Miller, and he will also lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance after. Thank you. Double duties tonight.
Can everybody please join me in a spirit of prayer? Mother, we ask your blessing as we look to the past with gratitude and to the future with hope. We remember those who have gone before us here, who labored not for themselves alone, but with a vision of building for the future a city better than they had known, inspiring us that same vision that we may labor for things beyond ourselves, that our lives may be dedicated to a higher purpose and grand horizons. Let us hope and dream of greater ideas, but teach us to be realistic about our limitations, but to never lose hope in our potential. In Jesus' name, amen.
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 I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chaplain. Before I go to Mayor's comments, I would like to introduce our corporate counsel tonight. He is filling in for Mr. Stu Weiss. This is Mr. Andrew Fisk, and he will be here to answer any questions that come up or anything. He is also part of the law firm that we have for our corporate counsel.
Welcome.
Mayor's comments. This Saturday, June 24, there will be a shred fest from 8:30 to 11:30 in the sheriff's parking lot. That is in the 4th Ward, and Alderman Kirkwood will talk about that more under Alderman Time. If you've been to our website, we are currently, we have an RFP out for bids requested for lawn cutting and board ups. So if you are a company interested in those, please submit your bids. In August, we will be doing our first community forum on the use of force policies. So we have not set the date. It'll be somewhere either the 4th, 5th, or 7th of August. Look for confirmation of that on our website and also under the Police Department. But we are in the process of scheduling that now. There is a back-to-school community brunch on Sunday, August 1 at the Jane Addams Center, and that is from 12 to 4:00. So mark your calendars for that. As you know, the Olympic Games in Tokyo start this Friday, and I wanted to take a moment to recognize a local resident who will be part of that competition. Nafeli Padakis is a 2017 graduate of Warren Township High School, and she will be representing our nation at the Games. Nafali has been training in judo since she was a young girl, and her family even has a studio here in Waukegan. I know that everyone in Waukegan is proud of this young woman's accomplishments, and we're looking forward to watching her compete in the Games. So tune in, turn on your televisions, and watch this one, folks. I'd also like to remind parents that the Waukegan Public Schools are coordinating and hosting a back-to-school resource fair on Saturday, August 31. This year's fair is a drive-through event for parents to get school supplies. The event is from 9:00 to 2:00, and students over the age of 12 will also have the opportunity to receive a COVID vaccine during the event. I highly encourage everyone who's eligible to get their vaccines scheduled. It's the only way that will truly end this pandemic. Families should contact Carolina Fabian, the Family and Community Coordinator at the school district, for more information. Her phone number is (224) 303-1036, or her email is cffabian. It's CF and then it's A-B-I-A-N at WPS60.org. Finally, I want to take a moment to reflect last week, just how proud I was of our, or our last council meeting, how proud I was of our staff and the Aldermen for voting on a budget in a 9-0 vote. Honestly, it was remarkable, and the fact that we've come together and worked on this together, I just want to say thank you. It's truly a pleasure to have this opportunity to work with everybody, and I'm looking forward to going forward in us just getting things done. So thank you, everyone. And that's it for Mayor's comments. Resolutions, proclamations, presentations, and appointments. I'd like a first and a second on a motion to confirm our new Waukegan Fire Chief.
So moved.
Moved, no, I'll first. No, I want to be first.
How about all nine on the first?
Everybody moves and everybody says.
I need a first. We'll go with Alderman Turner and a second Alderman Kirkwood, right? Roll call, please, or I guess we can do that one and voice all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. I'd like to introduce our new Fire Chief, Mr. Greg Paiser. Come on up.
I, Greg Paiser.
I, Greg Paiser.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the Office of Fire Chief.
The duties of the Office of Fire Chief.
For the city of Waukegan.
For the city of Waukegan.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Now that's yours.
Wow, it's beautiful.
I just want to take a moment, why Julie is pinning on his badge, to say, this is the support, the children, the parents. These will be the people that will keep you going. We're so proud of this man. You've raised a lovely son, and you have a gorgeous family, but please always be there for him. This is a tough job, and God bless. Thank you.
Yes.
So just want to say thank you very much. First of all, thank you for being here. I've been through the world to me. Mayor, council members, everybody, thank you for putting your faith and trust in me. I have some big shoes to fill from Chief Bridges, but I appreciate you guys putting your trust in me. My family, my mom and dad. You guys did a great job. I appreciate you guys wanting to help. My kids, you guys have been here for all my days that I haven't been at home, that I've been working here, through good and bad, and you guys mean the world to me, and I don't have nothing better than having you guys here right now, too, so thank you. Dad, bear, boys, thank you guys for being here, growing up. Boy, it was fun. Thank you for being here. It's my better half, Julie. You being by my side means everything, and there's going to be a lot to do here. I couldn't have given anybody better to be here with me, so thank you. And to all the boys and girls in the back that's been here supporting me, thank you guys. I'm going to do what I can, I'm going to work hard. Again, Chief Bridges laid a great foundation for us, and if I can be happy man than he was, I'm going to be doing all right. I'm going to work hard, I promise you that, and I'm going to do this for you guys no matter what. We're going to work together, we're going to work together, and somehow we'll figure it out. And I'll probably call Chief Bridges 10 times a day and ask him to do things. But again, thank you guys for being here, and you for everybody for approving me and having your faith in me, and here we go. So thank you very much.
Pictures, squeeze them in. We're going to squeeze in? Oh, Anne's going to go down. Somebody step in here. Want to get in there, Greg?
I'm all right.
All right.
One meeting for one person.
Couple more, I think we got a couple more. My stash.
Is it from Easter? Are they still, are they still fresh?
Easter 2020. This is like the best part of the job. Yeah, yeah. Look at the support, wow, that's great. Go celebrate. Go celebrate. Congratulations.
Okay, next is audience time.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
We'll actually give a couple minutes for those who are leaving.
Yep.
They didn't bring cookies. I know. At this point, we'll start audience time. Madam Clerk.
All right, audience time. There'll be three minutes, I will time you. We have four people tonight. The first one, Mr. Rayon Edwards.
Good evening, Madam Mayor.
Just a minute, sir, just a minute. We'll wait for the door to shut. Because we want to hear you. Thank you, go ahead, Mr. Edwards.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Aldermen, good evening to y'all as well. Come up here again, heavy heart. I want to first thank, first of all, Alderman Bolton for showing up at the Splash event over the weekend. It was a great, successful event. The kids actually loved it. As I was sitting here earlier, I hear about, or was watching somewhat of what you guys was doing with the Police Department, and I just want to encourage you guys, before you make any decisions about that, I think you guys need to start thinking back how it used to be. Community policing, it helps. If you have those officers in those wards for five days out of the week, when people know who they are talking to, they are more comfortable talking with them. But when you have different offices every week, it's not happening. So I prepared a little something for y'all tonight that I just want to say, and I hope it resonate with a lot of y'all, because again, we need the help. I'm an active community advocate and former gang member, passionate about cleaning up my community, not just my city and hometown, Waukegan, but the tri-cities, North Chicago, Waukegan, and Zion, that have long suffered from the lack of resources and inadequate support that the surrounding cities like Forest, Vernon Hills, even as close as Gurnee. I am not perfect by far. I have a story, a background, and I've paid my debt to society for the things that I am not so proud of. However, my past experience are what makes me the man for the job. My sentence was not the end of my story, but a part of my history. What I've found through a lot of mistakes I've made were lack of guidance, lack of community support, lack of community programs, lack of seeing those that look like me in high places besides gangs or in jail, simply not knowing what others are taught early on. For this reason, I know I am the man to advocate for our community, our youth. I know what they need because I know what I lacked and longed for. Starting, we need more program support that can be funded by our local government, grants and community organizations. I know many are building business, however, in order to zone in on the community violence and overall brokenness in our communities, we need to join forces creating a safe passage for our children in communities we live in. We need summer free programs, summer camps, summer meals, tech camps, steam camps, field trips, fire, free water park days, you name it. As a community, we should be able to join forces and create this to make our neighborhoods a better place. We need community workshop bus or van to get these kids to and from where they need to be. What I'm simply saying to y'all is, together, there's a whole lot of things we can do. It's not going to be easy. It ain't never be easy.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards, thank you. Calvin Mathis, thank you, sir.
Good evening. Congratulations again, Mayor Taylor. The last time I spoke, we were at the Genesee Theater, and it was a good event, and I liked the spirit, I, you know, I still like this spirit here, I like the diversity that we have up here. And I appreciate those words that Mr. Edwards spoke. In fact, I'm just going to scrap what I had wrote down. I've been helping, well, I've been working with Brother Blanks, just kind of browsing in the neighborhood to kind of get the feel for what's going on. And it's no secret, while I'm standing, why I don't speak often, but you may as well get used to it. I'm going to be here, as we got a crisis. What Mr. Edwards just talked about, Brother Blanks deals with every day. Every day I go over there, and I don't go there every day, maybe once, twice a week, but Brother Blanks is coming out of his own pocket, and he's trying to help these kids. In fact, he's trying to help the community. He's doing the best he can. And maybe you don't agree with Brother Blanks, I, me and Brother Blanks, he knows that right up front. We don't see eye to eye on everything, but we know what the bottom line is. And I think as a city, I just saw you guys getting ready, looked like you're going to spend $90,000 for some shot spotter. Wow, just like that. And these kids, Brother Blanks coming out of his own money, he can't get a dime, and he's doing, he's on the front line, he's working. That's, that's the reason why he wears those combat boots. And I'm just going to say, I'm going to be down there with him. And any support that we can get, because I'm coming out of my pocket, too, because it's that desperate. These kids need something to do. And we just throwing money away. We won't go to the cause. There's a dead body still, I haven't forgotten that. I haven't forgotten that, and I'm going to talk about it. But three minutes, missed three minutes, but I make my point. Because I'm going forward, when I talk about going forward in the rest of the year, I'm going to talk about this phrase, "us" versus "them." I like that phrase, because I'm going to work with that phrase. I'm going to tell you what the problem is. And that, and the problem lies right in that phrase, "us" versus "them." And thank you for your time, and like I say, we'll have a good conversation this year, and I still, I'm supporting you, I hope you the best, and I hope we're successful as a city, I really do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mathis. Clyde McLemore, please.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. There's another pink elephant in the room. There's a company here named Monarch, M-O-N-A-R-C-H, M-O-N-A-R-C-H. This company is based out of Denver, Colorado. This company has been here in Waukegan buying up properties. They own Harbor Lakes, they own Fox Crest, and all together, they own 1,440 housing projects, housing units here in Waukegan. The problem is, during the pandemic, they received $217,000 for rental assistance. How it happened was, this company initiate the applicants for rental assistance, then they contact the resi, the company initiate the application for rental assistance, then they contact the residents and had them sign the applications. This is against the law. It could be proven by looking up the application and talking to the clients. So all these clients that got paid for, they are now refusing to renew their leases. They are telling them because they can't pay their rent during the pandemic, they are refusing them their lease. This company is based out of Denver, and therefore, with the laws in Denver, you can't sue them. Fox Crest and Harbor Lake is one of the biggest housing places for housing vouchers. What this company is doing is creating homelessness in our, in our city. I ask for this to be investigated, and that the city of Waukegan don't give this company no more business licenses. This company has 35 employees and only one black employee. Thanks for letting me speak.
Thank you, Mr. McLemore. Margaret Carrasco.
Good evening. I noticed on, first thing is on the agenda, item number seven, sorry, 7B. I noticed that as in reference to allowing our Waukegan police officers to work at Ravinia Festival. I have a problem with that, because if our Waukegan police officers have so much extra time to work at Ravinia in Highland Park, then why do they not sign up for working special events in the city of Waukegan? Okay? And other employees do not get this special privilege. The next one is, so that's for our Waukegan Chief of Walls, that question. The next question is in regards to fourth ward Alderman, Mr. Thomas Hayes. Okay? I was contacted by one of your constituents, you know, the neighbors, they know everything, okay? And the question that they had, they could not join this evening, is that there is a property that's located at 4368 West Hill Avenue, and according to the county records, it's owned by the former mayor, Sam Cunningham. Okay? So their question is that, according to the Realtor listing for PIN number 0726409013, it states that utility information, water is well private, and septic is private. However, according to the tax bill now, it's showing that a permit was gotten for new forced sanitary main. The neighbors claim that, I guess, new sewer lines and water, whatever, were installed for that property. I don't know, I didn't see it, but that's what they say. Okay? And they just, their question to you is, who paid for it? The next thing is for legal counsel, Mr. Fris, Fisk, sorry. I will be forwarding a reduced scope for my FOIA request that I submitted in regards to building permits for that same property. And also for any properties that have been signed by the Bill Department, Mr. Protell. And also for Greg Squires. And the last thing is that there's a business owner on Grand Avenue, has a restaurant, however, he is advertising it as a banquet center. And according to the response receptive to my last, prior FOIA requests, he had no permits, he had no liquor license. And so how can that be? What is the message, and what's the example that we're setting forth for all the other businesses that follow the rules? He's already claiming his grant that he's opening up. Don't people have to go through inspections? And if you look at the pictures before and after, the two supports, main supports.
Thank you, Ms. Margaret, thank you. Your three minutes are up. Mayor, that concludes the audience time.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'd like a first, first and a second on approval or a motion to approve the consent agenda. The first, please.
I'll first.
Alderman Rivera. Second, Alderman Kirkwood. Is there any discussion about the consent agenda? Alderman Florian.
I'd just like to point out, since Ms. Carrasco just brought this up about the overtime, she was not here for our committee meeting, and I brought up, I spoke to the chief about the same thing, Margaret, because I was concerned, we've been told we're short-staffed, how can we be approving overtime in another community? And I was assured that these times, these, these overtimes will not be approved unless all the slots are filled for the day in Waukegan. So I just wanted you to know that I was reading your mail.
Okay, any discussion on the consent agenda items? Okay, the item A, motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from Monday, July 6, 2021. Item B, motion to approve the regular payroll dated July 16, 2021, in the total amount of $1,685,310.97. Item C, motion to approve vendor payments dated July 19, 2021, in the total amount Item D, motion to approve miscellaneous payroll, police department holiday payback, comp time cash out, elected officials and civil service stipends, and retro pay for Mr. Van Horn, dated July 16, 2021, in the total amount of $25,355.23. Can I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Mosio.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Hayes.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Motion pass.
Thank you, Clerk. Item five, reports and communication. Item A, treasurer's monthly report.
Mayor, I have two things this evening. Monthly report is available on our website, the Clerk's office, and it's always available at my office. I have a report this month, I reported several months ago about check fraud. Somebody had gotten a hold of one of our checks, did a very good job washing it. Somebody had gotten a hold of one of our checks, did a very good job washing it, and then made copies and presented a variety, a variety of checks. So to mitigate this check fraud, we've contacted First Midwest, its Fraud Medigation Service. To manage exposure of fraud, the Treasurer has implemented a program called Positive Pay. This is a fraud prevention tool. It's added Positive Pay to our online banking. First Midwest only pay the checks that have been authorized, and will bring to our attention any checks that have not been authorized, before they have a chance to clear through our account. This adds security by reducing our exposure to check fraud. Now the Treasurer has implemented a check positive pay, we can rest easier knowing that the fraud checks will be caught. Below is some of the information on our fraud solution. Lost to the city on fraud, $10,532.10. The largest check was $4,500. As of April, we have returned checks, counterfeit checks of $4,415. May returned a total of $24,876.09 in counterfeit checks. As of June, we've returned $7,076 counterfeit checks. The interesting thing, that's a total to date of $36,291.84, that we protected the city's accounts by instituting this. The cost to the city is free for the first year, and will be approximately, it's estimated at $600 a year going forward. The much bigger concern is new ACH fraud. ACH is how we move large amounts of money, large amounts of money. The example probably is best is every other Wednesday, we move the payroll by ACH transfer to a third, third party. If these people were able to break into this, we were just lucky that Positive Pay came along at this time, because we've only had one break-in, attempted break-in for an ACH transfer. They'd be breaking in right to our accounts. So we were just very fortunate, how this occurred, when it occurred, and what we were able to do about it. So our transfers on Wednesday, okay, are transferred to a thirty, third part, a third party that distributed them to your credit union or your bank to be available at midnight on, on Friday. That's just one of them. We, we move a lot of other money from account to account, okay, by ACH transfer. We pay, we pay off our bond money, okay, when, when the coupons rule, we do a lot of things ACH. So fortunately, we got the first, the first one, and it's been stopped. This is just very highly important at the time. Treasurer's report, does anybody have any questions?
Of course I do.
Sure. Sure. Dr. Fornian.
Treasurer Schwab, so the, I have a couple of questions. I tried to reach out to you today, and I wasn't able to connect with you, I had a busy day, I apologize. So you say the loss to the city, and you list these numbers. So there's a couple different numbers. So I guess what I'm wondering is, has this been monitored for a long period of time, or just since April, May, and June?
Several years ago, we had three checks present, presented, okay, that were, that were cashed, and First Midwest stood behind them. Once we put that out to the tellers, to be very aware, because they were all the same amount, so it was the same check. Very good copies of the same check, but it was the same check being used. Wasn't this method of wash, okay? So after that was out, and one was caught, not the person caught in the bank, but it was refused to be cashed, we had not had that until several months ago, when somebody washed a check, made it a blank, and then started filling it in, using, using that as a blank.
So has it been-
In the 13 years I've been here, we've had very little fraud. So the external fraud has been, okay, three checks that the bank stood, stood behind, one presented, that was never, that was never cashed. Then, I reported to you when I had some of these, okay, presented, someone went through, then went through to our account. They're very well done. So that's the money, that's the money we lost.
Did the police follow up on that?
Sure, we, we reported to the police.
Okay.
My office reports that to the police, of course.
Okay. So will we ever hear-
The only way, the only way we have an attempt, actually, to get the money back from the bank, is to have a police report.
Right.
Yeah.
But, but will we ever hear the, the outcome of the investigation, or-
I don't, I don't receive that.
Okay. And, and so, I'm a little confused about, you have April, May, and June listed here.
Yeah.
And, and so that, that was the total for each of those months, right?
Right. April, April was $4,000. I won't read the number. May, May was $24,000, June, June was $7,000. These are, these are checks that were rejected.
And do we think this is all from the same original attempt?
We believe.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions, please?
No.
That's my report.
One, one brief question.
Alderman?
The, the bank is, once we file a report, the bank is reimbursing us?
No, sir.
No.
No, okay. So, in some situations, that will occur. But I don't have the definition of when, okay? So the big thing is, is Positive Pay, and block them. We, we won't, okay? So, years ago, the bank just stood behind the three, they were all the same amount. $400, 380, 380, I don't know exactly, I'd have to go look that up, all right? They were all the same check, the same amount. And we, and we blocked it by informing the tellers to watch for this check with this amount, because they were all the same. This is different. Every check, every check that they presented, I believe, has been different.
So, so we're out this $36,291 and-
No, sir. Okay, no, sir. The tot, the, the total lost today is $10,532.10. The largest check was $4,500. That amount alone is very unusual. Most of these people want to come in and pass out a check that would be comparable to, to somebody's paycheck. Okay, a teller's taken in a check, so that's why the checks, the number of years ago, were like 3, 380, I'd have to go look it up, sir, to find out exactly. But they're, okay, they're, they're relatively small amounts, so they weren't, they weren't alert to anybody. Now, they're much more sophisticated, they're much more better at this. So a large check, that fairly large check, I'm trying to cash, okay? They don't put it in their account, they want it cashed, okay? And if they have an account, they have a false account, with all false information, okay? So when you go back to look up who it is, it says Felix Rivera. But it ain't you, I, I'm not coming to your door finding out if that was you, even if that's on the check, all right? Even if that was a deposit. So most of them are cash, small amounts, other ones, they have, they have a false account that they put the money in, withdraw three, three days later, they withdraw it, and the account's closed, it's, it's, it's gone. There's no way to get behind it. But I'm sure, I'm sure the, the chief or the, one of the defectives, we certainly could have them at the next meeting to explain further on what's the other side of, how do we try to catch these guys? I only can prevent them, I can't catch them at all.
Okay, um, thank you, Dr. Schwab. So, so the $10,532 is actually money that we've lost?
That's a loss.
Okay, and then the total-
There's always some possibility we'll get, there's always a possibility we'll get some of it, but very doubtful that we'll get any of it.
Okay, and then the, the total of $36,291, that makes up April, May, and June?
That's what we blocked, those, those are all attempts.
Awesome.
They're the total of the attempts that Positive Pay-
Has blocked.
Has blocked. Again, sir, the big numbers, $36,000 is nothing to our ACH transfers. So you just approved what we're gonna pay, right, for payroll. That money, okay, that, that, that money is going, is going to be transferred on, on Wednesday evening, all right? ACH transfer. If they have a way to break into that, that's, that's the potential that they could, whatever. So they, all these guys start small, they just, they just throw something out there, see if they can get by. If they get by, it's gonna be bigger. Just as I pointed out, the largest check being $4,500. None of those guys start that way. They start with small checks that they could actually go to a teller, teller wouldn't think anything of it, they just, they just cash. But if that works, then the next one, and then a couple more, then they get bigger.
Great, thank you, Dr. Schwab.
Yes, sir. Any other questions? That's my report, Mayor.
Thank you. A report from City Clerk Ho Kelly.
Thank you, thank you very much. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to bring you up to date on the change in the Office of the City Clerk, following the adoption of the budget on July 6. In May of 2017, the City Clerk office was delegated to administer and manage the liquor licensing for the city of Waukegan. We undertook that task with seriousness, and went about making it a resource for the businesses of Waukegan. For the purpose of transparency, we utilized the City Clerk website to include a liquor resource page. On the webpage, we provided a link to the city of Waukegan's Chapter III liquor code, and this was especially useful for those interested in starting the process of obtaining a liquor license, and provided readily available information immediately. In addition, we listed all liquor license holders, including those with video gaming. This data was provided to make sure that information was accessible 24/7 to law enforcement, Alderman, legal staff, and the public. We also posted the classes of liquor and their fees, plus the annual application, which had always been mailed out prior, thus cutting down on postage. We similarly streamlined the temporary nonprofit application. We are proud of the improvements of the liquor licensing under my tutelage. Changes now, under the current administration, effective following the adoption of the budget on July 6, the management of liquor and video gaming has been reorganized, and those functions will operate in and under the Finance Department, and with the same personnel who has been handling it for many years, Ms. Ruth Ona. We are committed to making this change seamless, and I can provide finance information or backstory on accounts if needed. Now that liquor, liquor and video gaming is ensconced back in finance licensing, modifications will need to be done in the city's Chapter III liquor ordinance to reflect those changes. Corporation Council can assist in updating those specific ordinances, removing City Clerk as the administrator, and inserting finance and licensing. I just wanted to bring you up to date on the state of the Office of the City Clerk, and that is just information for you in my report, and if you have any questions, I'm here.
I have a question.
Sure.
Um, I, I didn't see this backup documentation previously.
It was a oral presentation.
Oh, okay, so it was just placed on there now? Okay. All right, thank you.
And, and in fact, there is the ordinances that now are, reflect the incorrect administration.
Great.
Thank you.
This is a great report.
Thank you, Janet.
It was my pleasure. I think we did a fine job, and I certainly think the Finance Department can only improve on it.
I agree.
Thank you, City Clerk. There being none, no old business, new business. Can I have a first and a second on item A?
Move.
Second.
Okay. Alderman Turner and Alderman Florian. Any discussion to the motion? Item A, motion to approve LL, or FLSA Section 7G memorandum of understanding to modify the collective bargaining agreement by and between the city of Waukegan and the Waukegan Police Belmont Labor Committee, Committee Unit Number 42 for voluntary off-duty assignment during the 2021 Ravinia Festival. This matter was heard at the Government Operations and Oversight Committee meeting on July 19, 2021. No questions to the motion, can I have a roll call, please? Alderman Mozio.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Hayes.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Motion pass. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item B, can I have a first?
Motion.
Alderman Rivera, second by Alderman Turner. Motion to, or any discussion to the motion? Motion to approve an FLSA Section 7G memorandum of understanding to modify the collective bargaining agreement by and between the city of Waukegan and the Metropolitan Alliance of Police, representing lieutenants for voluntary off-duty assignment during the 2021 Ravinia Festival. This matter was heard by the Government Operations and Oversight Committee meeting on July 19, 2021. Can I have a roll call, please? Alderman Mozio.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Hayes.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Motion pass, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item C, can I have a first?
Aye.
Alderman Hayes, second by Alderman Turner. Any questions to the motion? And this was, this was item C, right?
Yes.
Okay, I crossed it out before I even read it. Motion to approve an FLSA Section 7G memorandum of understanding to modify the collective bargaining agreement by and between the city of Waukegan and Metropolitan Alliance of Police, representing the sergeants, for voluntary off-duty assignment during the 2021 Ravinia Festival. This matter was heard at the Government Operations and Oversight Committee meeting on July 19, 2021. Roll call, please. Alderman Mozio.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Hayes.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Motion pass. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item D, can I have a first?
Motion.
Alderman Turner, second, Alderman Hayes. Any questions to the motion? Okay, motion to authorize the proper city officials to approve an additional payment for the fiscal year '21 consultant, consulting, consulting agreement between the city of Waukegan and RJ Harrison Associates, in the amount of $6,875. This matter was presented at the Finance and Purchasing Committee on July 19, 2021. Roll call, please. Alderman Mozio.
Aye.
Yeah, we did the motion, okay. Roll call, please. Alderman Mozio.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom. Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Hayes.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Motion pass, ma'am. Thank you. I just want to clarify for those that, in the audience that heard that and were confused, this was for a payment that, I believe, happened last year and was not paid and put on this year to make up for that, because it was based on a calendar year, and it should have been on a fiscal year. Item A, there being no ordinances, closing items, Alderman time. Alderman Mozio.
Thank you, a couple of things. I don't know if people are aware, I put it on a social media post, but the Lake County Sheriff had put a post, but there has been a rampant increase in what they call ruse robberies.
What kind of robberies, Greg?
Ruse, R-U-S-E.
Okay.
Where a group of people will come to someone's house and poses, whatever, in public works, water, landscapers, whatever they can do, and it, they usually target elderly people, and they try to get them out into the backyard, and then the other people go into the house and basically rob you blind. It happened to a dear friend of mine, some of the elderly people in my ward have contacted me, they tried to, it also happened to them. I think we just need to be diligent and remind people that this is going on. You know, one thing, and you can always call the police. I mean, the first, if, if an elderly person is a little bit suspicious, I would just, just call the police, just tell the person, well, I'm gonna call the police. I think they'd probably leave, if you told them they were gonna call the police. You know, anybody else that would, would come, you know, would have ID, these guys may even have fake ID. So i- if anybody knows of that, we need to report it right away. And again, I would just tell the elderly person, or even, even a, maybe not an elderly person, that seems to be who they're targeting, just, just tell that person, I'm just gonna call the police, hold on while I call the police. And I think they'll probably leave. My, happened to my mother-in-law, she didn't say she was gonna call the police, but she basically told them to- She didn't say she was going to call the police, but she basically told them to hit the bricks. But she's an old North Chicago toughie, so I wasn't too worried about it. So that -- the second thing is, I went to the rededication of what was Webster Middle School to Edith Smith Middle School, which to me, in my time in Waukegan, is maybe one of the best things to happen. People that don't know, Alderman Newsome was front and center because she was on the committee to rename the schools. She knows who Edith Smith was. I know -- I knew Mrs. Smith pretty well. I was a young teacher. She worked at the high school. But she really should be revered even more. She is truly a civil rights icon, a local civil rights icon. She was front and center in desegregating the schools, getting the schools to desegregate and not just have white and black schools in Waukegan, all the way to the courts. So she really should be revered more than she is. And to be, not only to be, have a school renamed for a woman, but an African-American woman, I think shows great strides. And I've always felt if you're going to name local buildings after people, it should be local people. It shouldn't be national figures or, you know, people that were around, you know, 200 years ago. I think it should be for local people that have done something transformative for their community here. That's just my own opinion. I think that's the way it should be. But it was a great event, very well-attended. And I didn't go there. I went to the old Jefferson, which is now going to be Lewis Middle School. But to have that and then to have Mrs. Smith's name on that building, it just -- you should have seen the pride of the West Side. People that don't know, the West Side's awful proud. Frog Island, there's nobody from Frog Island in here that I know right now, but they were so proud, and they should be. They should be. But people that want a blueprint on how to make social change, you better talk to some of the people that knew Edith Smith. They're still around. If you want to make social change, you have to change systems. You have to change systems. Her and a group of other people changed systems. And sometimes that means you got to get to the right people. You got to get, sometimes you got to get to the courts, and that's what they did. So if you want to make social change, you need to follow Edith Smith's blueprint. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Kirkwood.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Just to echo Alderman Moseo, when I first came to Waukegan in the '70s, it was Ms. Smith and Luna Connors of the Urban League that assisted me in getting housing because I couldn't find housing at that time. So she became my godmother. She worked at the high school. I was a young teacher. As I told the story, that if it wasn't for her, I would probably not have stayed in Waukegan. She became my godmother. Her husband, Marvin Smith, was very instrumental also because he provided, you know, the opportunity for Mother Smith to do the things that she did. So certainly, serenity was an outpouring of appreciation for Mother Smith. So we need to continue to look at that because certainly Whittier School would not have been desegregated. She was the first African-American woman to sit on the school board. Certainly, Mr. Burke was the superintendent at that time who helped pull that through in desegregating those elementary schools. Moving on, it's important to remember that we can all do better here in the city of Waukegan, but we have to work together and not try to tear one another down. On Saturday, we're going to have a shred fest, as the mayor talked about early, the 24th, at the Sheriff's Parking Lot at 25 South Martin Luther King Drive. It'll start at 8:30 a.m. and end at 11:30. So any materials that you need to have shredded, if you bring them there, they'll shred them in front of you. I would encourage all residents to do that. This is sponsored by State Senator Adrian Johnson and State Rep. Rita Mayfield and myself. It's important that we have those opportunities, and these two public officials have made it possible for us to do that. Also a reminder for block party applications, we need to be given a two-week notice. I would encourage our residents to have block parties, to get to know one another better, but also practice safe distances, COVID, because, as you know, we have an uptick, and certainly it's not going away, so we need to be careful. Even though you've been vaccinated, it doesn't mean you can't get COVID. It just means the symptoms won't be as bad, but you can still get COVID. Also, the fourth ward's promoting keep Waukegan clean signs. If you would like to get some of those signs, you can contact me at 844-484-9273 or at my email rudell.kirkwood@waukeganil.gov. Also, we want to continue to promote the neighborhood watch programs, encourage all residents that when we hear shots fired, we call the police. And if those residents don't want to call the police, especially from the fourth ward, just call me and I'll call the police. But we need to make sure we get a handle on these shots fired. Once again, let's be safe. Let's work together for the city of Waukegan. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Alderman Newsome.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. As previously mentioned, it was an honor to serve on the committee with the school district within renaming of Webster Middle School to Ms. Edith M. Smith Middle School. I met Ms. Smith when I was campaigning for office, and she was a humble lady, and I didn't learn that she had done so much for civil rights until after she passed away. And I saw it in her obituary because she never, like I said on Saturday, tooted her own horn, but we were able to do that for her on Saturday. Her, her husband, and Reverend Cook, and two other people were instrumental in filing a lawsuit against District 60 for segregation practices at Whittier. And it was thought that because they lived in Frog Island, which was predominantly black community, that's why the school was black, predominantly African-American, but they filed a lawsuit and the district would not desegregate. So they took it all the way to the Supreme Court, and that came about with the Armstrong Act, which went into place that desegregated Whittier along with the other schools in Waukegan. So she truly was an icon for civil rights, saw that something needed to be done, and didn't stop until it was done. So it was a great honor to be there. Congratulations to her family, the Smith family. An honor well-deserved. When I sit on that committee and I found out what the criteria was, I felt that it should be someone from the community to have the name of that school. So her legacy will live on, and people, her family is still here. Her children actually live in the same two houses that she lived in when she first came to Waukegan. Her daughter lives there, and they had their house built next door, and her son still lives there. So they stayed in Waukegan. She made a huge impact with Waukegan, so I'm glad that the school was honored in her favor. So thank you. And also, a friendly reminder, fifth ward, going to have a ward meeting on Wednesday, July 28, 6 o'clock p.m. here in the city council chambers. Refreshments will start at 5:30. And if you have any questions, you can always give me a call or contact me by email edith.nusome@waukeganil.gov or 847-494-4190. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Alderman Turner.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. First, thanks for the Shot Spotter team that came up and gave us a presentation during the Public Works Committee meeting. If you did not, weren't here for that meeting, I'd encourage you to watch the video on YouTube. It'll be up later tonight or tomorrow, but it's very interesting technology and solution to help mitigate the impact of shots fired across the city of Waukegan, and we're just beginning to look at that solution. So get involved early and pay attention to what's going on. If you have any questions, you can obviously ask me. And the sixth ward. So on Saturday, I had my ward meeting for Q2 in Upton Park, and I was so excited about the number of people who showed up from the board. I think we had over 65, Larry?
Right.
Yeah, it was a lot of people, and it just blew me away, and I forgot to take pictures or anything like that. But I really appreciate everyone that pays attention and came out. I will do a, I'll get out a blast email and some social media posts on some of the statistics and accomplishments that we've made in the sixth ward in the last three months. I'll get that out. I'll try to get it out tomorrow. To that note, I want to thank the Youth Conservation Corps, which is headquartered on Greenwood in the sixth ward. They partnered with our city workers to do some massive cleanups over the weekend, or last week, and that was along North Avenue and Franklin. If you take a ride through the area, it looks totally different. I mean, it's just amazing what those kids and city workers did down there. And that was like phase one. We're going to continue the effort to improve the area of North Avenue and Franklin Streets. Additionally, they cleaned up a huge trash collection effort along Elmwood and Longview over near Hillary's and behind the Bowlin Alley. So kudos to them, and I just can't express my gratitude enough. One reminder that I like to make sure that everyone is aware, please do not put signs in the parkways. It's a ordinance against that, and, you know, if you leave them in there, they stay there forever, and eventually they just become unsightly. So we don't put signs in our parkways. If you see that your sign that you put in the parkway has been moved, very likely it was me who moved it. On a happier note, so we just had our dumpster drop a couple of weeks ago in the sixth ward. I'm going to do another one on September 17. I know it's two months out, but we plan things early, look ahead here. So September 17, from 8:30 to 3:00 p.m., that'll be in the 1,700 block of Hickory underneath the power lines. You know, of course, I'll continue to mention this and get Mass Communications out as well. The annual Sixth Ward Ice Cream Social is going to be Sunday, August 22, from 2:00 to 5:00 p.m. at 1320 North Jackson Street. All are invited. And last but not least, if you'd like to get on my email address, please send me an email or send a text to me with your email address, and I'll add you. My contact information is phone number 847-445-3788, and my email is keith@keitheturner.com. That's all I got. Thank you, folks.
Thank you, sir. Alderman Rivera.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. First, I would like to thank everybody that participated during audience time. It's very important for us to hear from the community, and it's a great forum. So thank you very much. Number two, as indicated earlier by the mayor, there is going to be a back-to-school community brunch. It's going to be Sunday, August 1, and it is going to be at the Jane Addams Center. Registration is required. It appears that Naomi is the name of the person, yes, SR Creations by Naomi LLC, and she can be reached at 224-717-6109 for any questions that you have regarding the event. I would also like to bring to light, and I just got this before the meeting, the Waukegan History Museum to host Waukegan Lakefront History and Nature Tour. The Waukegan History Museum and Lake County Audubon Society invite the community to a guided walking tour showcasing the history and nature of the Waukegan Lakefront on Sunday, July 24 at 10 a.m. The tour will begin at the Steiner Pavilion at the Waukegan Municipal Beach located at 201 East Seahorse Drive. The tour is appropriate for families, and in case of inclement weather, the tour will be canceled. That's all I had. Thank you, and God bless.
Thank you. Alderman Florian.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'd like to thank Mike Hewitt and his crew for the successful dumpster drop I had last week on Thursday. We filled two full dumpsters. I didn't make my usual three, but I figured on a Thursday that was a pretty good showing in the eighth ward, so I appreciate that. I'll be planning one more in probably early October for my last one for the year, so I'll let you know when I know those dates or that date. And then I just wanted to remind people, I don't know if the other aldermen have gotten these calls in the past about people complaining about their taxes. The assessments just came out recently, and this is the time of year, if you're going to protest your taxes or, you know, have them appealed, this is the time to do it. Both my home and office are in Warren Township, and the final filing date for Warren Township is 8/9/2021. I'm assuming Waukegan Township will be around the same time, and you only have 30 days from that date to file an appeal, and all appeals must be filed online. So now is the time to do this. Don't wait till you get your actual tax bill the next time and then complain it's too late. So I just wanted to point that out, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Hayes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Alderman Florian, I am jealous of your two dumpster and typical three dumpster record. The ninth ward had its dumpster drop on Saturday, and we didn't come close to meeting that. So ninth ward, I know you have more garbage out there for the next one. Let's see if we can rally. But it went well, so it was my first one, so thank you. I'll do a better job of marketing it, but I do encourage everybody to check their basements, their garages, and just, you know, get rid of anything that might be lingering around the house. I would also like to congratulate Fire Chief Pazer one more time. Thank you for your service, and congratulations on the appointment to chief. Other than that, feel free to reach out to me. I gave my phone number and email address at the last meeting, but the phone number's 847-212-4762, and my email address is thomas.hayes@waukeganil.gov. There's certainly been an uptick in emails since the last time I gave that information out, but keep them coming, and I'll do my best to respond. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Alderman Bolton.
Yes, I want to acknowledge Focus Program that had a wonderful, wonderful event. It was so much fun, I didn't want to leave. This Focus Program is designed for our children, undistracted success. That's what Focus means. Yes, they had an event in King Park. We all got full of bubbles and wet, and it was fun to see the fire. One of the firemen got all soaked and shot up with water, and it was just a hilarious time, and I think we need to do it again. Also, I've had one dumpster at Martin Luther King and South Avenue. We're going to have another neighborhood cleanup. It is the Bahai Community, and they're going to do their cleanup July 24 from 10 to 12, and it's going to be in Washington Park and Bluff. And if you would like to do your own neighborhood, I will definitely come out and support that, provide bags and dumpster and gloves and whatever you need, if you'd like to coordinate that. And then I, too, will be putting out a few more dumpsters throughout the year. Also, on the 24, Jesus Named Church at the corner of Lakin County, they will be doing an outdoor event. Also, I want to acknowledge this young lady of color. Her name is Cherish Gator Boutique will have a grand opening at 23 North Tennessee, 3 to 6 p.m. That's also on the 24. That's also on the 24th. And then I also want to echo what the other Aldermen said, I had the pleasure in serving the committee to change name for Jefferson. And I too was trying to submit some local leaders, but however, USC community chose to change Jefferson to John Lewis. But, I definitely advocate that, you know, social change starts at home and we need to see someone that is touchable and someone that has lived in front of us. And one of those names that I submitted was Wallstone Francis. He almost got it, but USC community chose differently, but I definitely advocate and echo that same point. Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you. Alderman Seager.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Last Saturday, we had Operation Clean Sweep on the southeast side of the 2nd Ward, that's over on Greenfield. We had a dumpster over on Greenfield in the corner of 12th Street. It was, it filled up fast, so I do plan on putting the next dumpster for the 2nd Ward over off Fulton and, that would be Elmwood, Elmwood and Lloyd Avenue. And I'll give the dates when I can get, I'm gonna try and get two because I want to get that part of that 2nd Ward too and then the 3rd one back over on the other side, on the west side of the 2nd Ward, Western Lewis Avenue. I've gotta congratulate Public Works on an incident that we had over on Lloyd Avenue, 1405, it's near Buttrick Street. The resident had called me about a tree on the parkway and I said I would come over and take a look at it and Alderman Kirkwood brought it up to me and the very next day I went over there and it was a huge oak tree. And it had a hole right in the trunk of the, the oak tree where rodents or ants or something, it ate the hole inside out. So 4th Street Department came over, I had called Mr. Hewitt, he sent his supervisor over, Eddie, Eddie informed me it had to come down, it was a safety issue, it had to because if we had gotten a bad storm, that would have taken out two or three homes. And that new truck that we okayed Mr. Hewitt on purchasing, the new tree truck, I had a chance to see how it operated. Amazing, amazing. That's already paid for itself. It's just amazing to see how these guys work and they do an excellent job. So I thank all of Public Works staff and office employees, thank you very much. You guys have been working your tails off, all this whole last year with this COVID-19, it makes it hard, but I thank you. I'm sure all of us Aldermen up here, all nine, thank Public Works and other departments also. I know I do. Okay, and that's, have a good evening and I'm glad you all came down here tonight. I'd like to see more attendees to the council meeting in the future. Thank you and good night. Be safe.
Mayor, that concludes the Aldermen's time. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Couple of quick things for clarification before we dismiss tonight. Thank you, Alderman Mozio, for bringing up about the ruse burglaries. There's been, I know at least one in the 9th Ward and one in the 2nd Ward and the examples that they, or the ruses that they used was people selling things online and they would come, one example was somebody selling a lawn, a piece of lawn equipment and somebody came to look at it and it was a setup. So, be aware that those things are going on. Like I said, I know of two in the last couple of weeks, so please be aware of it. Second of all, you will be seeing applications for people to apply for library board, CBGD, 911 Board and Planning and Zoning. They will be on our website. You can also contact the mayor's office if you're interested in that. We are always looking for new people, people interested in being a part of their community. So again, those are the two places you can look for that, on the website or the mayor's office. Lastly, I want to thank Chief Bridges for filling in for me this week. He allowed me to take a couple of days off to celebrate my 40th anniversary with my husband and thank you for doing that for me because you stepped up. Thank you. With that, can I have a motion to adjourn? By Alderman Rivera, second. By Alderman Kirkwood. All those in favor?
Aye.
No.
Good night and God bless, everyone.